We are taking this so it can be seen by people that are going to tune into the public station on the website. So, I'd like to lay a few ground rules and then discuss some of the philosophy behind what we're seeing tonight. First of all, everyone should go maybe to this side, probably most visual. Stand up, go to the side, state your name, and your address when you want to speak. Let's remain respectful tonight, let's view all the information. This is the first time we've seen the information that's going to be presented tonight. So, it's the first time for us too. There'll be no votes by this board tonight, this is strictly informational. It's like suspending information in there so that we have an idea of what some of the folks from Plum Island are thinking, or from other parts of our town. And if the board decides to vote on a design, then I'm sure at that stage we'll pull together another meeting, or the BIR Selectment meeting, so everyone will know. Each year during buzzer season, we consider new options for raising the revenue, and a pay parking lot on Plum Island has been considered for many years. Our first presentation this evening, and I'm not calling right at this point, is by Arc Engineering. Matt Tessia?
Yes.
On the conceptual design of the Olga Way parking lot, we have invited you to hear and ask for input before we move on to the final phase. The next presentation will be Ed Kincaid presenting Parky on Meters. And Tony Komornik is here from Merrimack Valley Plain, which is the group that initially did the study. And we also have various town employees, Margaret Taylor, Doug Packer, Susan Neis, and Mike Riley, and Tracy Blaze, and your Arc Board of Selectmen. So, tonight, like I said, this is for us to work together and try to put together some information that we can use. And I'm sure because of the location, there's going to be some people that have some emotional thoughts, but let's work together and try to make sure that we all understand the reasoning, and the concepts, and the facts of why this is good or why this could be bad, and all the other ancillary things that could go along with it. So, best speaking, I'll ask for Arc Engineering and Matt.
Thank you very much, sir. For the record, my name is Matt Tessia with Arc Engineering. We were asked by the town to look at the gravel parcel, two parcels right here behind the pump station, off the end of Olga Way, for the ability to fit a parking lot. So, we started by doing a topography of the area, getting existing parcel information pulled together, and then we developed a conceptual layout for a gravel parking lot. So, I just wanted to walk through a brief presentation on what we have. And again, it's just kind of a conceptual layout, so there's not a tremendous amount of fine details here, but I want to walk you through the highlights of our proposal. So, we've been able to fit comfortably 56 parking spaces in the lot. It gets access coming off of Plum Island Turnpike up Olga. You pull into the parking lot, enter, you park, and then when you were leaving, you would then leave and exit out of Weber's Court. It will be the general flow of traffic in and out of the lot. The lot is intended to be a gravel lot, much like the way the property exists now. There'd be basically some minor grading to fly out to the appropriate parking space areas, and then we would put a wearing course of gravel, so it was a nice firm surface for parking. We have proposed to put some very low-level solar commercial ballard lights. They're tamper-proof, they only down direct light, and they're just for, it's all, no power extension into the properties required. It just has a small solar panel on the top of it and down directs the light during the dusk hours. They can be set on timers to eventually turn off when the lot's closed, so it wouldn't be a nuisance to a butters all night long, or anything like that. There's also a wooden guardrail to help identify where the limit of the parking lot is, because it is a gravel lot out there, and the grading will be minor. The guardrail will help define exactly where the vehicles need to stop on the parking spaces. All the parking space sizes are on this plan nine by 20. To give a little extra depth, your standard space is about 18 feet deep, so you give a little more depth to pull. If you pull up to the guardrail face, you'd have an extra couple of feet to, you know, empty the trunk, or whatever you were trying to do if you were headed to the beach or something like that. There's a plan to do some supplemental screening where it fits around the parcel. We've also identified areas where it's appropriate to put low-impact development drainage features. There would be water quality swales, and probably a combination of some planted bioretention areas to meet mass stormwater standards. Most of the runoff from this area, as it does now, will be directed towards the low areas adjacent to this parcel, and on the parcel that ultimately infiltrate into the ground. And like I said before, all of the grades on the site are essentially very minor altering in order to get that flat wearing surface. And that's the basic outline of what we're trying to do. There would, at some point, a decision would be made on where it would be appropriate to have gates and lock the parking lot down when it wasn't in use. But all those, you know, fine details and where parking pay stations would be and stuff like that would get to be finalized. With that, I open up to any questions anyone had about the layout.
You know what? You're going to be here for the evening, right? Maybe it would be better to hold questions to the end, because some of the other pieces might fit together, instead of trying to ask questions that might be answered by later presentations. So, thank you, Matt. Ed, are you ready?
Yes. Grab on this chair. A couple closer so everybody can see it. Feel free to join me if you'd like. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Ed Kincaid, I'm with Parky on USA. With me is Dana Pacat from our local Massachusetts distributor, Westport. They've been working with Parky on for about 15 years now in Massachusetts. We are the worldwide leader in multi-space parking meters and parking technologies. This is what we do. You may be familiar with our machines from Newbury Court, from Boston, from Gloucester, and we work all around the United States. New York City is our biggest installation with about 13,000 meters. We're in Washington DC, Atlanta, Miami Florida, St. Louis, Seattle, Austin Texas, Las Vegas, as well as a lot of small towns as well, like Gloucester, Newbury Court, Bedford, Massachusetts. We just put 15 of these in the summer mill earlier this year. Our multi-space parking meters are the most robust and reliable in the industry. As you can see, they're solar powered. The solar panel here trip-charges a battery, and that battery runs the meter. Any ambient light is going to charge that battery. We have a seven-inch color display. That color display is unique in the industry, no other company can offer the color display. The color display does two things for a community. One, it enhances the user experience. And what I mean by that is the screen is clear in sunny weather. Sun glare becomes less of an issue, the screen will adjust according to the amount of sunlight that is showing on that screen. It walks you through the parking process step by step. We all know when you go to another city that these can be confusing when you park at them. This walks you through the entire process step by step, eliminates a lot of the confusion that a lot of people feel when they walk up to one of these. The second thing it does is the color screen adds a lot of additional capabilities to the machine. What can we be doing in addition to parking? And I'll circle back to that in just one moment. You have a capacitive keyboard. This is basically an overlay here, okay? It's programmed according to your mode of enforcement and any additional features that you have on there. One of the key things about this overlay right here, there's no buttons on here. So, there's no freezing issues, there's no water issues. As you can hear, it beeps when you touch it, so you can get an audio confirmation of the process as you're going through the parking process, or whatever you may be doing at the meter. These do take credit cards. We are PCI Level 1 compliant, it's very important to know. We do go through an auditing process on an annual basis. We do bi-weekly and quarterly scans, going through constant credit card security checks. Right here is a very subtle little feature, right here. You see these raised bumps here at the front of the credit card? And what that's meant to do is prevent a skimmer device. It'd be next to impossible to attach a skimmer here, and if you did, you would notice it. A lot of devices have a standard metal front, and those are very difficult to detect. We have a coin inlet right here, this does take coins. We do have the capability to add a bill acceptor right here. That's up to the town whether or not they choose to do so. All coins are held in escrow until a transaction is completed, which means if you hit the X button, cancel out of your transaction, the exact coins that you put in will drop out at the end of the transaction. The coin inlet detects any metal there, it takes metal to open up the coin inlet. It will immediately flush out any slugs. We used to have a salesperson who worked for the company who liked to put his house key through it, because it would come out the coin inlet and reject it as a potential coin. You got your ticket receipt right here, it's a thermal printer. Ticket drops right out at the end of the transaction. You have a secure collection vault right here, okay? It can only be opened by the collections officer. And then down here, we do keep a second battery for redundancy purposes, because the color screen is that much more of a power drain than a monitorm screen. Inside, all the parts are plug and plied. And what I mean by that is this can all be replaced without the use of tools. Takes under two minutes to replace any part of the meter. You've got your battery, mainboard in modem, credit card acceptor, ticket roll that holds 6,500 tickets, which is above the industry average, your coin selector, and your thermal printer. Pretty simple, pretty concise, very low maintenance. We do offer a mobile phone payment system as well, which gives people another option to pay. Going to summer months, if everybody's going to the beach at the same time, sometimes lines can accumulate. And for people who are coming down here frequently, they can download this application on their phone, pay for parking that way. We offer a robust back office system as well, part of the package. And that includes all of your maintenance reporting. So, any maintenance system regarding machines is logged there. Maintenance alerts, such as slow paper, or collection needed, or low battery, or whatever the case may be, can be sent out to your technicians by text or by email. And then last but not least, it also includes all of your financial reporting tools that obviously the city would need, you know, for their monthly accounting, or weekly, or quarterly, whatever the product should be turned. That's basically Parky on 101.
Ed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kind of leave that close before we open for questions, we'll put that out. Tony, are you ready?
I'm ready to answer.
Okay, then you're going to be at the ends of the table to answer any questions that count our way about the preliminary study. Tony was involved in the preliminary study. So, before I open it up to questions and comments from the audience, does the board have any questions of clarity or anything else before we hear from the audience? Doug, Susan, anyone?
Does this, does it have the ability, can you swipe with your phone? Can you take the picture and maybe that way too?
We do near field contact in Europe. We have not yet brought that technology to the US. We do have the capability to do so, so if you had an arrangement in place, that's something we could certainly consider. Right now, with the adoption rates that you see, I don't know that it's worth the investment. I think that technology is still a step or two away from becoming mainstream payment.
I'll have a quick question, then. Ed, do you have any that are in a salt environment, would like blowing sand?
We have tremendous experience in short communities, from Gloucester to Long Island.
Down the street, you'll be able to.
Okay. I guess, is that quick?
Do they ever break?
Something always breaks.
They do require a minimal amount of maintenance. The uptime on these is 99.8%. We do have the most reliable solar technology and communications in the industry. That's not to say there's not the occasional hiccup, but from a reliability standpoint, this is the best product in the market.
Anything else from the board?
You know, you know if one goes down without putting your eyes on it?
Yes.
You do.
So, once again, I'll send out any maintenance alerts by text or by email. It's also recorded in the back office system. Part of the training that we'll do is best practices with the back office system. Typically, in the morning, we'll have you set up, and they're called park jets, they're just little windows that give you a quick snapshot of what's going on with your parking operation. And one of those would report any alarms to you, in addition to them being sent out by text and email.
So, before we really put the onus on the audience to answer our asks, Tony, do you want to just quickly, briefly state, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but the process, you were asked to do a parking study, you did the parking study. Some parking spaces, and I'm speaking, you might judge me, were lost, so that the concept was probably to find some spaces that might be available, and that's probably a lot how this occurred, right?
Yeah.
I mean, listen to it, Tony will kind of frame in what his process was in the information.
We basically conducted a parking study of the Plum Island Center area. In the summer of 2013, we looked at the public spaces, paid spaces, and the spaces that were, that are in place along Sunset Drive, to get a sense as to whether there really was a parking document, the degree that there is a parking issue in that section of Plum Island. What we found was that indeed, there is a parking issue, a capacity issue, in the center area. We found that parking occupancy rates during the peak period in June especially, a little less so than in July when we went back and looked at things again, was in excess of 9%. And theoretically, 85% occupancy is the capacity for parking spaces in any given area, because you're going to have turnover of cars coming in and out. You'll rarely see 100% occupancy of parking in a given area. So, that 85% figure is the theoretical capacity of parking supply in a given area. So, we did find that you were above that 85% rate in the center. We also noted that there were some sort of problematic parking spaces in the area, most notably along Sunset Drive, Plum Island Grill. And it would probably be a good idea if you could remove about, you said in the report, about five to 15 of those spaces to make it easier for parkers to get in and out of the grill, people to make a right turn from the turnpike onto Sunset Drive, and overall, make it a more safe environment for both pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. And you might want to figure out where those spaces could be replaced. We also noted that about that time, some of the spaces behind the package store, right, were lost. About 30 spaces were lost there. So, between those two potential changes, what was lost behind the store and along Sunset Drive, looking at about 50 spaces that would no longer be there. And so, that sort of leads you to think, well, how can we replace those spaces? And one of the recommendations we made was perhaps look into replacing the spaces along Sunset Drive along Olga Way, or even looking into expanding the Olga Way lot, or at least the number of spaces in the lot beyond the 15 spaces that I just mentioned. So, that's how we've sort of gotten to this position.
Thank you so much, Tony.
Can I just ask, who, I mean, who authorized the study? And how much have we paid for this study for Arc to this point?
Well, let's do this. We were, Tony was discussing the parking study that was initiated on the request of the selectmen, because we were going to make some changes on Plum Island because of parking safety issues. We made changes in byfield. When we change especially a street to a one-way street, we need some help. You know, when we make drastic traffic pattern changes, we're not engineers, so we get help from engineers, especially to protect the town if there was an incident, you know, where someone really got hurt. So, on Tony's end of it, that question falls in line with what I said. I think your question was, who or when did we hire Arc Engineering? And I'm going to speak a little to that issue, then maybe Doug or Tracy can flesh it out. But when the traffic study came into us from Merrimack Valley Plain, and the issue was discussed about having an overflow situation for cars because we were taking spaces away, and it was mentioned that that might be a way that it could be done. To even ground proof, ground truth the process, you would have to do some sort of engineering to see if you could even do it. And am I speaking in the right fashion, Doug, Tracy? So, that's why we went forward to see if it could even be something that could be accomplished. And obviously, at that stage, if it was accomplishable, then it would come back to the Board of Selectmen in the design process. That's the reason you guys are here tonight. And like you said, we're not going to be voting tonight. Oh, you want to know the cost?
What is the cost?
I don't know.
I'll have to call the invoice that was back. I think we started in 2013?
Yeah, I don't remember that.
And that doesn't interest us.
If you give me your information, I can send you a copy of the contract. You can send it to all of us. Anyone who wants it. Welcome to our self-public information.
And like I said, remember, for the process, that was the process that was put forward before we even begin to think about things like that. Now, the next step, obviously, is, I think, by the amount of people here, and probably the proximity to the parking lot that most people live, you know, there's going to, there could, or maybe, or might be impacts. And so, that's why we've put this meeting together to start to, like I said earlier, put that information in suspension so we can process it. So, when you raise your hand, because you raised your hand and got away with it, you're going to have to state your name, come up here and give your address. And if it's a question to us, we will field it. If it's a question to Matt or whoever, when you get up to the forefront, why don't we do this? Is there any questions for Matt Tessia or Arc Engineering on the design? Come up.
Okay.
Just state your name.
All right.
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I'm Mark Allen. I'm with, I'm on Olga Way. And Matt, just a couple of questions. You called this the gravel parcel. It's not today gravel, correct?
When I say that, you know, Arc was approached that, you know, this is historically a gravel parcel behind the, we have not done any, this is a conceptual layout for a parcel that we've understood to be gravel. We haven't done any investigation of that, so I can't speak to it. But I'm sure others in the town.
I may be able to help you. It is a disturbed lot. I wouldn't call that whole area a gravel lot. I don't believe it ever was. Right now, presently, it's permitted to hold somewhere upwards of 20,000 cubic yards of any kind of materials that we need to defend Plum Island. That's what it's permitted for. If you go out there, and the reason that it's as flat as it is, and Matt makes the comments that there'd be very little grading, is because that's because of our activities out there. So, it's a disturbed zone. But not, but I would not characterize it as a gravel parking lot.
Perhaps gravel from the sewer treatment plant up to the road, but beyond that...
And maybe a little deeper.
Beyond that, it's based for the dune.
Yes, it's a disturbed dune, I'm sure, yes.
Secondly, well, okay, Doug, while I've got your attention, is it legal to pave the dune, and thus eliminate its natural movement, if it doesn't have gravel on it now? If it's not grandfathered with materials that will prohibit the dune from moving naturally?
I had some real concerns moving forward. I didn't want the town to get too far ahead of the process and then find out there's a big red flag there. So, what I did early on is I put an initial call into the Department of Environmental Protection, the Northeast Region, and I asked them, I kind of presented this to them. And they're not in the habit of making comments early on when a project goes on. They just won't do that. But they gave me two guidelines, is if we weren't flattening a dune, and we're not, it's already flat, and we weren't creating furniture, then they had no immediate red flags. And at that point, I felt as though it was worthwhile for the town to do a little more discovery on it.
The other question for Arc is that when you did your survey, has it been registered in Essex County?
No, the existing topography has not been reported yet or anything like that. There was a great deal of research from the existing parcels, but I don't believe a plan of land has been reported yet.
The reason I bring this up, and this is for the council, because you're going to be hearing about this at town meeting through the cherry of sound. And that is they have, they've surveyed all their properties, and it's been discovered that my property is not, has now moved three feet into Olga Way. And I'm assuming that the adjacent property has nothing else. If this all has to do with McCleod Road evidently is impinging, McCoud, you said it? Is impinging, or whatever it is, on properties that, you know, it actually, from the way it was originally platted, it's actually running through a couple of buildings, as I recall. I think you're probably pretty aware of it.
We are investigating that with town councils, and there may be movement.
So, that's the reason I ask, is that if this doesn't jive with their survey, then that may affect what, at least the approach, the parking lot is going to be. And I would also just, just to let you know, that if you go out and look at Olga Way, as I understand it, it was paved when the sewer treatment plant went in beforehand. It was gravel, or dirt, or whatever. But the road itself is deteriorating badly, because there's a lot of heavy traffic that goes down that road, and also the grading. Whenever it rains out there, that whole road floods. And when cars drive down there, it washes on the adjacent property, and it's eroding all the adjacent property. So, part of this plan, I would think, would have to be re-engineer Olga Way and Weber's Court. Widen them, make them legal. So, these are all things considered in the total cost, which I assume we're going to have an idea of cost and return before we leave tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mark, to answer that cost return and all those ancillary things that could be associated with Olga and Weber Court, this is still informational, we might not have all those things, but that would certainly be on the process before the selectmen had the next hearing or even entertained with making any sorts of primordial or primary decisions.
Can I ask a question, Doug? I heard you mention that it's used, this parcel right now is used as a staging area. Do we have any, if, and that's the big if, this project goes forward, do you have another location that you can stage at?
Yeah, I would say right off the end, where this lot stops right there, I would put a couple of gates right off the end of that lot and move the two stockpiles that are down there. There's two stockpiles, I think one has somewhere, I don't know, 12, 15,000 cubic yards of material that was purchased by the town. That'll get moved down to the end, that's clean sand. And then there's some other sand that came from that lot right there that's, it's got up to maybe three-eighths inch, quarter inch stone in it, because that's about the best screed you can get to screen it out. So, we keep those two piles separate. In a dire emergency, we would use that contaminated sand if we had to.
And Alicia made a point that maybe should be broadened in scope. If we were to accept the ability for, like Ronnie's gesture to, who came to the MRVA? What's his name, quick? Who owns the boats?
Ron.
The guy that chairs?
Oh, oh, okay.
George is going to take and maybe try to go through the permitting process to buy his own small river dredge, and then maybe truck some sand for emergency uses. Of course, Reservation Terrace has a lot of problems right now, too, that it might be suitable for. But if we had a parking lot there, because this is a question we're going to get, would it inhibit ultimately our storage if we got decent-sized amounts of sand from...
Let's say you had a dire emergency and you needed to put sand down there. You could always take a piece of your parking lot and still put sand in it. always take a piece of your parking lot and still put sand down there. That's not, and it's gonna be a gravel lot. So, if you had to stockpile, you could still use that area.
Any other questions?
My name is Kevin Hunt. I am on 10th Street, 14th 10th Street, fairly adjacent to all of this. What I'm fascinated by is this is all just sort of merged, and there's no point or focus to it. Jeff, you kinda said, well, it's probably to raise money. We're gonna raise money. And yet, Tony, you're talking about helping out five parking spaces for the Plum Island Grill and the loss of 30 private spaces. Why the town has any responsibility for the loss of 30 private parking spaces? I have no idea why they would wanna do that. And secondly, the Plum Island Grill, Sunset Boulevard, any of us who have lived here long enough know those spaces just suddenly appeared. That used to be a no parking area, seriously enforced. Now, people come there and they're four feet onto the road. So, losing them really wouldn't bother anybody on the island. I think there's only one person that would be bothered if they disappeared. And that's about all I have to say.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Yes, come on up.
My name's Lisa Barlow. I live on 10th Street. My husband and I own 17, Ian 19, 10th Street. I'm just feeling kinda sad in that I keep thinking of Joni Mitchell.
Yeah.
They paved.
Paved paradise.
Yeah. Put down paradise, paved, put down the parking lot. The other thing, I was, I was just wondering, too, what all the agriculture and the animal left that I have behind my house, is all trees back there? So, I don't know how this would affect all that. We see all kinds of, we see owls and hawks and everything. I can't even tell many birds, cooper hawks. So, I just feel like that would really kinda binge on that. Just sat by, and also, a whole thing. The last meeting on February 4th, I think it was held at Pitter Hall, I had shown up and a couple of other neighbors, and we went in thinking that we were gonna have a meeting about the parking lot, and it ended up talking about, they said, this meeting is only gonna be about trash. So, three of us left the meeting, and we come to find out after this, they did end up talking about it. So, I just wish the communication was a little bit better and clear, that's all.
So, I have a question about what you just said.
If, let me just say, if I was at that meeting, and I might have been at that meeting, the Plum Island Committee, and the chair's not here tonight, but I think four members are, the Plum Island Committee was probably not tasked with the Oldaway parking lot, but they're certainly tasked with parking. And it ebbed and flowed philosophically, and that's why.
It was just the way it was presented. We're just talking about trash tonight, so three of us left, and then they ended up talking about the parking. So, I just felt like I dismissed, devalued, and, you know, I, we, we can't build, and we haven't built on 19th because we don't wanna, we wanna preserve that all, you don't see too many trees on Plum Island, I don't know, anybody notice that? But that whole area there is nice, and I kinda like my trees. And I feel like the lights and the parking, people are gonna wanna kinda take a little tour and kinda go into the, that area, and I don't know, I just don't understand what the cost of it really gonna make any sense. But I was wondering how much it costs for those parking meters, and then to have somebody come by and check the tickets, and then how much is it gonna cost when the meter isn't working? And I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to me, I guess. But Kevin will say it.
Thank you. Alicia.
So, I have a question, Doug, can I ask that? Are there, is there, is there already trees on this lot, or is it?
It's absolutely bare. There may be a few springs of dune grass, but that's it. Because of the activities that we've had down there, that is an absolutely bare spot that's laid out on the place. There are trees on the lots that this takes, you know, that occupies a portion of.
There's a lot of trees.
But not, not at the site, not, not on the layout.
We haven't cut down any trees, right?
No.
No, but not to dismiss that, though, they're really close. You can look at this photo, I guess this photo is a lot better than what you're showing up there.
I, I just can't believe, my name's Kevin Barlow, 17th 10th Street. I went to the Newbury Round School. I was born in Antige. My mother's, was born in Antige. We've been out here since 56 on the island, and bought the house 12 years ago from the family. First of all, I'm just amazed that this is probably, next to High Sandy, if it's not greater than that, the high dune that we're talking about, and at the base of this dune, you're gonna, we're gonna possibly have erosion, and we're gonna put a, a barrier up, the people will stop their car maybe, they're not gonna climb over there, they're not gonna climb up the, the dune as they do now. Somebody's not gonna go up that dune when there's no restroom facilities and start, you know, defecating in somebody's backyard. It happens now in that lot, and I don't believe the lot is as vacant or as bare as everybody looks at it. Anybody wanna look at this picture? I mean, I just can't believe that this development doesn't, that that doesn't take away some of that, that green and some of that shrubbery, hedges. I may screw up the name, the, what are those pools? I'm gonna screw up. Rental pools out there. The plot that I saw cuts back in, it actually digs into the dune unless that's only the boundary that's there. I'm just, I'm amazed that we're even entertaining the thought of putting something out there and jeopardizing the heights of those dunes from the bases up there. And maybe back towards the Hope Point Road, it isn't, it's flat, but that's all high topography right there. And I venture, I mean, I live up there, I walk there, how many people have walked out back there? It's, I just don't, I can allow it, and I think it's wrong, and I pledge to do everything I can to prevent it. Thank you very much.
Kevin, thanks.
Thank you.
Instead of really trying to totally answer, Kevin, unless Matt or Doug have a summary statement, it's gonna be duly noted, and that's gonna be, I mean, at least for me, I've gotta look at all the things that someone here stated, you know, the mechanics, the money, the return, the expense, your wife stated. I am not blind, you know, Darcy's spoken to me, I'm not blind to the impacts that the traffic could have. Like Mark said, we have paving problems anyway, and you have some heavy trucks, too, that go to this. So, I mean, these are issues that we're going to try to have a very firm understanding of, or for this board, and I can't speak for my board, would entertain, you know, the parking lot, it all has to make sense, and that's why we're here tonight. Do you wanna say something, Alicia? No? Steven? So, sorry, I didn't see that handle, it was up towards the.
This is Steve Manger on 14th Street. Couple of things, I really associate myself with what Kevin Hunt said about the magically appearing parking spots on Sunset Drive. I'd also note that even if they were to disappear, there are many private lots on the island, nearby private lots, that could take up the slack of those disappearing private parking spots, excuse me, public parking spots, parking spots on Sunset. And I think that's one thing we can do to enhance the business community, that is the community that has parking spaces. Certainly, recently, I've talked to, like, the owner of the cottage, and he'd be happy to have people parking there and paying a fee to park there. So, I think that, like, when you think about Sunset parking spots, maybe they could go away. And I would agree that we don't have any obligation to provide more public parking in Oldaway. It does occur to me that if it were public parking, when my pet peeves, if you will, but when people come down to the island, and I'm not talking about the residents and non-residents, but when they're bringing their dogs down, the dogs come out and immediately start either urinating or in some cases, defecating. So, that'd be another issue, which would be costly, you should try and have dog drop stations and that sort of thing at an Oldaway place. Further, I'm not sure if I were an immediate butler, I'd be very pleased with the idea of having a lot of dog urine accumulating in that, you know, sensitive area. I had a couple of other questions, but that's what I wanna talk about on this issue, and stop there. One other final thing, yeah, February 3rd or 4th, whenever it was, that before the meeting began, we made quite, quite clear that we weren't gonna talk about Oldaway. Once the meeting began, one member started to talk about Oldaway, and I raised a point of order saying, no, we told people we're not gonna talk about Oldaway, and that stopped it. But subsequent, and I'm not sure, it was after the meeting adjourned, or it was just at the very end of a non-adjourned meeting, that Oldaway started coming up again, and I confess I should have raised the point of order again, if the meeting was still open as opposed to having adjourned. So, in that sense, I apologize.
All right, thanks. And before this young lady speaks, anyone has a complete answer for the dog issue, let me know.
Margery Planting in 11 Plum Island Boulevard. Question for you about drainage.
Yes.
Is there a possibility that the drainage that is put in there is going to create standing pools for standing water? Because there's a concern, of course, about mosquitoes.
Yeah, with the, with the type of soils that are out here, you would not have standing water long enough to create, you know, like a burn-up pool habitat or some kind of long-term pond of water where mosquitoes would definitely not design it that way.
Okay, so it wouldn't be long enough for mosquitoes to lay eggs?
Correct.
Lay eggs and breed in there?
Correct. It wouldn't hold that standing water.
Thank you. For you, you make reference to 15 parking spaces that are currently on Oldaway?
No, I was saying that if you remove the five to 15 spaces along Sunset Drive because of conflicts that you have between parking maneuvers there, people walking back and forth, people turning off a Plum Island turnpike, one option for possibly replacing that many might be at Oldaway.
Okay, well, I would like to echo what others have said, that there were no parking spaces there before the grill was there, and I don't even know how you call them parking spaces, that people just pull off the road there. My final question is how, and I guess, I don't know if I addressed this to you or the board, how is it going to be determined that this is a safe project for the flora and the fauna on the island? That is a real, the home of many, many types of wildlife. Not only birds, but there's a coyote den back there, and there's a lot of wildlife back there.
This project will be.
And turkeys.
Sorry. This project will be presented to the town in the form of a notice of intent for the Conservation Commission. And if at that time, it's that sensitive an issue, and we hear from enough of butters, we could always perform a wildlife study. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to do that, it's, it's some more money that we may not need to spend, but we'll certainly take, you know, take note of that during the, during the areas.
Although with the sensitivity of the island now, with all of the restrictions on building and even on planting a vegetable garden, which is basically prohibited, how can we possibly be putting a parking lot in without making these kinds of studies first?
Vegetable gardens aren't prohibited, but, you know, it's very, we've never done a wildlife study for any project up on Plum Island. But again, if, if the citizens feel it's important enough, and the town feels it's important enough, then certainly it's an option.
And also for the flora, for the, for what's growing back there?
It would be a complete study, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. No, waiver, thanks.
By David Williamson, 1 Southern Boulevard. I wanted to just make a clarifying point and then a couple of clarifying questions. As far as the point on a few days where we reach 85% capacity, I think the days where it's 95 degrees and 90% humidity, we're, we're well over 120% because all legitimate parking spots probably turnover twice in that day, and everyone who has an extra spot in their parking lot is grabbing 20 bucks a car. So, and then there's people that are roaming the streets and never find parking and leave.
Dave, can you mention, because, to the people that might be listening on TV, why you're such an expert on this?
Well, I do own the.
Cause you, you.
Yeah, sure.
You wanted some of the.
I, I own the parking lot at 3 Northern Boulevard and at 34 Plum Island Boulevard. Those are the ones just off from the center.
And I will say that David's been very helpful in, in working towards decisions on Plum Island. So, if anyone probably has an idea of real capacities on, so speculating that depending on the summer, depending on the weather, has a lot to do with probably.
No, we, we know, I think anyone pointed out, there's, or we've all been talking about in these meetings, there's probably nine days in the summer, or eight days in the summer where it's those conditions, and there's many, many more people that wanna park on the island than there's any capacity at all. And they start parking anywhere they can find a spot, whether it's allowed or not. And we all know that people take cars, and, and all that's okay, that's just it. And is it safe? Probably not. Is it crazy? But that's been the nature of Plum Island forever, right? So, I don't know, it's never really been an issue with that, you know, just to be accurate, I think that's, to be clear on that. And then the fact that I do, I have parking equipment, it's just gate equipment, and it's very old technology, but I've been running it for 20 years. So, I would ask, when you say low maintenance, I have to kinda just giggle, because that's a non, you know, that's not a number, it's, right? I mean, do we know what, what's it cost? I don't know, was that asked? Do we know what those cost?
Yes, and under the Massachusetts Cooperative Act, which we were, one of the companies that were awarded that last year, this exact meter right here is $6,950.
Oh, gee.
When you're comparing it to parks equipment.
No, that's cheap.
There, there's no moving parts in there, unless you get a model of a Veloc Sifter. These are much more durable. You'll find that the life expectancy is, as long as that casing looks good. So, it's not unusual to get 10, 12 years out of it.
What's the warranty?
It comes with a one-year warranty with the option to extend for unlimited years.
And do you have any numbers on what the normal maintenance cost is per year on these? Probably nothing in year one, and something in year two when it probably builds.
It's gonna vary on the, on the level of care that you give it. If you do the quarterly or semi-annual preventative maintenance on this, you'll find that you run into very, very few issues. Like I said, the uptight one, this is 99.8%. In a sandy environment, you wanna clean the Veloc Sifter.
Yeah.
You wanna clean the coin inlet and the coin selector, you know, and, you know, to prevent the salt corrosion, wiping down the, you know, the steel casing every once in a while is a good idea.
For six rand, you can buy another one, a spare part. So, it's cheap. I will tell you that, it's pretty cheap.
If you wanna buy one, you can.
I might consider.
Okay, that's a beauty.
Hey, thanks.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else?
I hate having to look back to anybody here, so. No worries. I'm Darcy Johnson, I live at 9 Oldaway. I thank you for this opportunity, and I thank my neighbors for coming up. I just have a few comments and not so much questions, but I guess comments that I'd like on the record for tonight's meeting. One is that we live right at 9 Oldaway, so we are the house that is right at where the parking lot would begin, and I have great concerns about 56 cars coming into the lot and not being able to access our house because we're in a line of traffic waiting to come into the parking lot. So, I'm not clear how that would work, and I'm not clear how people would know that the lot was full, and I have great concerns about emergency access to our house should we need it. So, I'd like to fill in record for that. I'm also concerned because I've been gratefully going to the Plum Island Study Committee meetings, and I'm very thankful for the committee and the work they've done, but there are trash problems and facility problems, and I echo my neighbor who has concerns that if people are coming off the beach and they're parking and they need to use the restroom and there isn't one, are they going to be using the lot? And so, I definitely have concerns about that. I, I also wanna echo what my neighbor Mark said about the grading, because our road is flooded, anytime there's heavy rain, our road is flooded. At one point, I actually had to call to get the water plowed. That was in the winter, which I don't think the parking lot will be in big use then, but it, it really is a problem. It's a grading issue, and it floods right under our house because our house is open and it goes right underneath. So, I'm very concerned about the grading issue. I'm also very concerned about the road itself. I, I guess I would ask that there would be even a study done about that level of cars on Oldaway, and I'm also concerned about just the traffic pattern. I haven't heard that there would be a light or anything, and I can't understand how 50 cars would come out of Weber Court onto Plum Island Boulevard at the end of the hot summer day, with also cars coming out of Cottage, because there's tremendous parking across the street. So, I think there'd be a real parking problem. And I guess the last thing I wanna say is I'm, I've only lived on the island five years. I consider it a blessing. I don't, you know, I certainly support all the businesses, but it seems to me that one of the parking issues is really because of the Plum Island Grill, and I'm not clear that it's the town's responsibility to try and resolve that problem.
Grill is only at night. You've got literally dozens and dozens of cars that park on that street all the way down when they walk to the beach to avoid the parking lots. Or if the parking lots are full, they park there. So it's a, it's a sort of a mixed bag of, if we put one of those parking meters right there and captured them and kept that street for parking, while you're trying to figure out how to handle the Olga Way side, I think it would make sense to try to balance this issue, just to pin down the revenue and figure out how it works. I think that's one of the recommendations we're making, is we've got, you know, over by the bridge, they park down by the bridge, there's 50, 60 cars there in the summertime. So that's a lot of cars. And then they walk all the way up to the beach. And the Plum Island Grill only starts at 4:00, 5:00 o'clock. Yeah, there's 20, 30 cars that go down the boulevard, but that's it. So it's really, the daytimers are really the mob that are down there. There's tons of them. They don't mind walking to the beach, they love all this stuff. And they go off at 4:00, and then the other supply lines will show up. Really. So it's kind of a, it's a great revenue street, if you think about it. You've got them all day and all night. So that's all I want to say.
Is it legal? Do they park there?
Of course they can park there. Wait on Sunset.
Three hours limit.
No, they cannot.
Well, they go all the way down to about, you know...
Harvard.
Yeah. Wait now. They only go down a certain amount, and then it becomes no parking the rest of the way. What we found was it was...
Mike, come up here, please.
Sure. Mike, how many cars would you put on there? From the street? Be 40 or 50, max, all right?
25.
Yeah, about 25.
Max.
About 25. And after that, the road tends to curve. And in those curves, you don't want anyone parking. And also, as you approach the refuge gate, because traffic in the mornings tends to back up at the refuge gate, you don't want anyone parking there either.
Right. That's too far.
Yeah, absolutely. So that, we found about 25 cars fit in there. And we enforce it when they go beyond, and the neighbors are very diligent, and they call, and we come down and we enforce the parking as well, so.
Is there a time limit? Three hours?
It's a three-hour limit. And our guys chalk the wheels, and they do all the things that the meter maids do, and it works. I mean, people come and they move the cars. So, you know, on the heavy, I've listened to a lot of the concerns about the traffic. And on heavy beach days, it's like any beach community, there's a lot of traffic, and people have to drive slowly, and, you know, it takes time to get to where you're going. It's a beach community, and those things happen. As far as Olga Way goes and traffic coming out, well, it's a one-way in and it's a one-way out. So I don't foresee traffic jams. You know, it's 250 feet from Plum Island Boulevard to the entrance of the parking lot, so people are backed up. Yeah, getting to your house on the real peak times could be an issue, but we have emergency vehicles and we know how to move cars over. We've dealt with heavy traffic before, and we'll deal with it. So as far as exiting onto Plum Island Boulevard, it's just like anywhere else. Mr. Williamson, his lot is right at the corner of Northern Boulevard, and that's a tough spot to have a gate, and we frequently get people waiting to get in. It's never been an issue. People drive slowly, we, on the heavy days, we station somebody out there and conduct those traffic.
That's why the gates aren't in use on a heavy weekend.
Right, right. And, oh, you've been fantastic about that, you know? So there are things we can do, and can I predict the future? If this parking lot goes in? No, if I could, I'd play the lottery, but I can't. However, as problems arise, we'll deal with them. The residents will call, we'll deal with them. If it turns out to be a big issue, as far as maybe we need extra personnel down there in the lot as a full-time, we'll deal with it. That's what we do, so.
Yeah, I thought we were trying to raise...
Mike, is this a question for Mike?
This has to do with...
Because this...
This has to do with access.
Okay, so it's for Mike.
Chief.
We'll get you right up here.
I understand that, you know, you said getting out of Weber's Court isn't going to be a problem.
Oh, it's no bigger problem than getting out of anyplace else.
Well, it is a big problem. If you go, because it's heavily forested on the left-hand side and on the right-hand side, and I leave there every day, at least once a day. And when I approach, and there is a sidewalk, and there are people from rental properties to the west that are using that, there are people from the east walking their dogs, riding their bikes, because they don't ride on the street. And so when you actually creep out, out of Weber's Court onto the Boulevard, you've got, you may have to wait for 30, 60 seconds because of the traffic and just not want to hit anybody. In approaching Olga Way from the west going east, it's clear view. You can see just fine, because there is nothing. Coming from the east going west, it's, you know, you can miss Olga Way even with the one-way and everything else, because again, there's trees there and everything else. So there is, there are competitiveness divisions at both approaches.
Right. And before any parking lot goes in, I'm sure remember Mac Galley Planning and the engineers would design something. I'm just saying what we as a police department can do as far as enforcement, as far as being present out there. As far as sightlines and things like that, I'm not an engineer. That's up to the town and the engineers to take care of.
Coming back, no Stephen.
Just one quick thing on entering a parking lot. One of the reasons why we didn't fit more spaces and bring parking even further along this road was to allow for a considerable amount of stacking in the event that people are parking and cars have to wait going in to maintain access on some of the roads, for the driveway to your home that you had mentioned. So there is extra room for, along the entrance to the parking lot, so cars would pull kind of in and out of the way of existing driveways before they have to wait in queue or something like that before they connect to a parking lot.
So, 12th and 13th, 13th and 16th, pretty much, sorry, I can't understand. Pretty much, this is like directly behind my house. And I just, I kind of question like the location of it, where it kind of, it kind of tucked itself back in there. I just think it could possibly lend itself to some, you know, not good activity back there, you know? I mean, I question like everybody else is questioning here, I mean, are there courtesans back there, or just do they have people yarning, trash receptacles? Like I said, it's more of a comment than a question. I don't want to waste that back here, you know? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so it's not back here, it's... Thank you for the opportunity to ask some questions. Jim Panzer at 16th and 16th Street, so I'd be overlooking this parking lot. I'm here representing not only my interest, but the interest of my wife, Jocelyn. Jocelyn's family has had a decades-long presence on Plum Island, further down on 52nd Street. We just bought the house about five years ago. So is it my understanding that this is just an engineering study, and it's not really a, like a use study at this point? Like, I'm thinking about foot traffic. Neither Olga Way nor Weber's Court has sidewalks, as I understand it, and are people supposed to walk on the drive into the parking lot to get out? I, my wife and I share a lot of the concerns that are raised, and we endorse them 100%. I believe at some of the Plum Island Study Committee meetings, the concept of parking, encouraging more people to come onto the island without building the capacity to meet their own basic human needs, we're talking just basic human needs. It wasn't only just a public health issue that was talked about here, but also a moral issue at this point. My wife and I have been discussing, like, to what end? Like, there's a need for a public parking lot on Plum Island, but to what end is 56 cars going to provide the town? I haven't met many of you at this point, but I believe, your name is Doug?
I am Doug. I'm Doug Patton.
Jim Panzer.
Hi, Jim.
You mentioned that you felt that the beach management activities, the beach management plan that's now currently operated in a large portion of that parking lot could occur concurrently with the parking lot there. I wonder with improvements such as the wooden barriers that were mentioned by Mr. Tessier, and also the water swales, you know, how that would impact the machinery egress into there to do the beach management activities. I just, thank you for the opportunity to share these concerns.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Will a copy of this be available to us?
Is it? Is it? Sure. I don't think it's just a, it's not been a schematic design, it's not a vital design.
No, I understand. Yeah, I understand. Can we take a picture before?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. I will at the end, thank you.
Did I see a hand this way?
Hi, I'm Ellen Daly, I live on Olga Way as well. I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. So one of my questions is, I'm just curious how many of the folks here and people who have been asked to do studies have actually been out to this spot that we're discussing to physically see it? Okay, great, thank you. And I wanted also to make sure, we've been talking about this for some time, both as in the Butters group of neighbors and also on the Plum Island Committee, and we have sent some information over to the town. And I just want to make sure and request, I guess, that anybody that's involved in this conversation and will have anything to say about it gets to see that information that we've put together. I think our list of Butters' concerns is, have you seen it?
I have seen it. It was forwarded.
Yeah, I think it's well done, not because I was a part of it, but because smart people thought about what we want to be concerned about. The size of the street, the safety issues, the way that we would all have to live, of course, is a minor part, too, the birds, the animals, all of the other things. So there's, I think there were like 20 points to it, and I just want to make sure that everybody sees them, because I think it's well done. And I guess also ask that if anyone else would like to have access to it, that they can have that. We also had asked some time ago for a business plan, and I don't know if one has been put together yet, but we, a couple of us, did a sample business plan and didn't see a real way for this to be a moneymaker, and that's even after it's been paid for to be put in. But just in a general sense of, there's a lot of private lots on the island, most of them are not full most of the time, and the people who own those lots are able to go and change the price all day long. And I don't even know if you guys know about this, if anybody told this to you, but they run outside with little stickers and they change it to 50 cents, to a dollar, to $10, to $20, depending on the weather, the volume, the time of day, whether the fish are running, what have you. So for us to be trying to do that with that kind of a system, I don't think we can sort of beat the private lots. So when we looked at when lots are actually full, when there's opportunity to make money, I think we came up with something like $7,000 a year, which is hardly enough in our minds to justify all of what this will do to the island, to the neighborhood, and those sorts of things. So we're curious about business plan and when that might be ready from the town's perspective. Not only, again, what will it cost to put it in, but what will it make for money since that, sorry, because I'm going to disagree just for a minute, but we've been told this is about making money so that we can get some services back on the island and not about it being a need to replace spaces. So as that being the primary source of the reason for doing it, we want to understand, is it going to make enough money for this to all make sense? I'm wondering when we might have answers to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Steve speaks, he put his hand up again. The meeting tonight, justified with so, I know for my board, you know, it gets me to think a little more ground logic. You know, I've been in town an awful long time, and I grew up on Plum Island. So, and I know when you're talking about High Sandy Dune, I think it was 13th Street, that wooden saw box that my father built, I could look out on the basin and there wasn't a house there. So the island has changed, and we're cognitive of that. And when I say ground truth kind of perspective, you know, I've had to think tonight, maybe that is a long way back, you know, we will think about this, you know? What do people do when they start to drive back with the dogs and every other thing? And I think probably one of the things that kind of struck me was, is there a safety issue for people walking out of the parking lot or into the parking lot, and the business plan? So, I mean, this has been a good meeting.
Can you answer that question about blocking when, what happens when the people park their cars and get out? Then what happens?
I mean, yeah, we haven't been tasked with pedestrian flow, but then the way this is laid out, pedestrians would block along that side of the road or along that parking lot. There's no sidewalks under this scenario, but it doesn't mean it's not part of the project. We were just asked that, you know, what could potentially fit back there?
So you haven't looked at the pedestrian?
Well, pedestrians have not been looked at. I don't know if it was in the parking study, I've read it was a long time ago.
Well, we actually looked at more of the pedestrian flow right at Sunset Drive, being able to cross right there and noted there were some deficiencies there as well that should be corrected.
And I think that goes to prove that there's no decisions being made tonight. This is strictly informational, and I think it really goes to prove that the engineer was only going to see if the parking lot held water. I don't mean literally held water.
That matters, too.
So, good job, yeah. Is there anyone else there that would like to speak? Come on up.
Hi. I'm Colleen Burns. I live at 9 Olga Way. And I wanted, a lot of the questions and concerns that I have, many of them have been raised already, or asked. Just as a minor point, Danny's not here, he used to own Mr. Mo's, but he rejected the idea of a loss of 30 parking spaces. So I'm not sure where that came from, but he was absolutely clear that there was no such loss from his point of view. So I'm not sure what the discrepancy is, but I just want to put that out there. And I guess the only other thing that I want to say tonight is, you know, I work in the field of human services, and one of the basic principles is, first, do no harm. First, do no harm. So when I've listened to this over many, many weeks, we've attended essentially every Plum Island Study Committee meeting and have had many individual conversations with many of the people in this room. And there's two issues that stand out to me. One is, I do not and have never gotten clarity about what exactly is the purpose of this parking lot. I've heard a lot of different explanations and yet not gotten clarity about that. And the second thing is when, and we'd be happy to talk more about this in another venue, but when we've added up the pros and cons, the, I mean, I live there, I see when the parking lots are full and when they're empty, there's about 10 or 12 days a year that it's total overflow and chaos, and otherwise, a lot of them are empty. And so my concern is this may not actually meet the revenue expectations that the town may hope for. And so, you know, at least from my perspective, and I won't go into it because it would be much too long, when I weigh the pros and cons from where I sit, and obviously I have a vested interest, but I do think that, Darcy and I have had many conversations about the greater good. We understand the concept of sacrifice and the idea that I think is not a popular idea in this country right at the moment, that sometimes you need to sacrifice for the greater good. And we're willing to do that, if that makes sense. But I do think there are multiple vested interests operating in this, and there's a lack of clarity about the purpose and the mission. And I would say when things are that unclear and when the pros and cons don't add up clearly, then the principle that I operate under and I would ask this board to operate under, because I know that you have a fiduciary responsibility to the town and the people and the well-being of everyone, is first, do no harm. Thank you.
Thank you.
good, and we're willing to do that, if that makes sense. But I do think there are multiple vested interests operating in this, and there's a lack of clarity about the purpose and the mission. And I would say, when things are that unclear and when the pros and cons don't add up clearly, then the principle that I operate under and I would ask this board to operate under, because I know that you have a fiduciary responsibility to the town and the people and the well-being of everyone, is first, do no harm. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can we get, to answer her question, can we get some clarity tonight so that...
I'd like to make a comment, actually, if you don't mind, just to finish up. Doug tells right into your comment. Jen Wright, I am not speaking from the Plum Island Study Committee, I'm speaking as a representative. So, this is, that was fantastic, really great. And I just want to commend the town for taking on this large project scope idea, just an idea. And that's a question that I'm wondering, too. As a committee member, I'd love to hear the answer, and I know you were trying to just answer, Alicia, but my question is, is the town, this is to try to figure out why we're having, why we need, there's a need for a parking lot, is the town trying to satisfy the need for parking because we are considered, and you looked on your website, a public beach, in which case we can receive state and federal monies for beach nourishment? And also, are we trying to satisfy the zoning, that's the lack of zoning on Plum Island for the businesses, so they succeed and help them succeed, so there's somewhere for people to park and go to these businesses? I don't know the answer, so I'm going to let you, let you answer that, but I also want to finish by saying that parking would generate revenue wherever the parking is. I don't, I am not advocating for anywhere for the parking, but wherever it is, it would generate revenue for town services, trash, facilities. So, that's sort of where I'm coming from, that they're trying to solve a problem, and we're going to find out why, and there is an opportunity to generate income from people, for people to come, park, the town makes some money, we get facilities, we get trash pickup, we can use that money properly. But now I'm going to turn it over to you, but I think it's a very, I think it's a good idea that you've looked into it, and, you know, that's all you can do. So, thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Jim, thanks. Did you want to say something?
My question, I was, it was my understanding that back in 2013, we did this study, and that due to traffic issues, we needed to eliminate some parking on the island, and that this was one opportunity to negate that impact. Did I not understand that correctly?
I think we've had a number of issues before the board of selection over the last five years. We've had issues on the island, Ms. Damon brought some to our attention back in 2012, I think, when it started about trash and those types of services, and could the town step up and provide more? We've had numerous public hearings and complaints about parking along Sunset. You know, we're not trying to solve the Plum Island Grill's parking issues, we're trying to address the citizens' concerns who live along that area. We've had, I'm trying to think of, we did all the different grant proposals that we've put in for lighting along the Boulevard to address traffic, I think Martha, you've written them, we've had, I can't even say how many parking issues we had before the board. I know you deal with them on a constant basis. So, rather than try and take each one separately, we wanted to look at it in a much more comprehensive manner. Okay, if we have an ability to deploy these parking on meters, and that can raise revenues to address trash and lifeguards, and it can also provide parking for the beach businesses in the area that don't have enough parking, I think we've seen three or four of them go out of business over the years because of that issue, well, maybe this is an opportunity to utilize one of our town resources, this parcel that we have available. And, you know, the Collins point, nobody here wants to negatively impact anyone's quality of life, I think that's why the board's holding this meeting, to hear all of the concerns, all of the issues, see if we can incorporate them into a final plan that would satisfy them. And, you know, if not, after hearing from everyone, if the board doesn't want to move forward, they won't move forward.
Could you comment on the state and federal funding? For beach nourishment, that it needs to be a public beach?
Yeah, we have obtained easements, where we have, wherever we have accepted federal funding to put dredged material on the beach as a nourishment project, as a requirement to obtain two easements from them. One is a temporary easement for placing it, and the other one's a permanent easement that gives you the ability to take your blanket and put it on their property and enjoy the ocean, enjoy the beach.
I thought they gave the easements up.
No, they're in perpetuity. That's one of the issues in Massachusetts, one of the tough things in Mass that in many states, some of the theories are, is that we'll nourish your beach, and when the sand goes away, the easement goes away. That's not the case on Plum Island. If the sand goes away, the easement's still there.
I disagree with that, but that's just my opinion.
That's okay.
It's, to follow up, Stephen, is the follow up as a question to Tony, and it's a question of clarity for me, because I don't remember what your study kind of said, but barring the amount, and Mike kind of play into what my thinking or where it's going to go, I thought the elongated length of parking on Sunset Boulevard, and I thought it was less than .25, but I can't remember when we placed that last sign, I thought a lot of that parking was in, you know, it was anti to safety, because the road is narrow. And I don't know what the cutoff of cars were, because we hear 15, we hear five to 15, and we hear maybe 25, but for some reason in my mind, I was under the illusion that to entertain a lot of parking, because I'm going back to what Bob said, on Sunset Boulevard was dangerous, especially with all the traffic to the refuge and all the traffic that goes in different ways at night with the Plum Island Grill, or even during the day when people park there for beach purposes. Can you remember? Am I getting you in trouble? Can you remember?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
And really, when you look at the traffic issues on Plum Island, the only traffic issue really in terms of capacity issue is the amount of traffic trying to leave the island in the evening off Sunset to make a left to go on to Plum Island Turnpike. And that has a level of service of D, and that's how traffic engineers classify a level of congestion at an intersection. Now, D is acceptable in an urban area, and, but, the problem that you have at that location is that at that time, you're starting to see a lot of parking maneuvers coming in and out of the Plum Island Grill. You've got people moving in and out of the park spaces on Sunset. You've got some people coming onto the island and making the right turn and getting caught in all of that, that friction. Our recommendation was to remove the friction, certainly, from that section of Plum Island, or Sunset Drive, that's right opposite the Plum Island Grill, try and remove that, that problem. That was five spaces that we decided should be removed to do that. And if you want us to go a little further down to Bryn Mawr, is that the right? Yeah, where there's conflict there with people coming in and out of that road, that would be another eight spaces. So, our concern was more of safety and, both traffic safety and safe flow of bicyclists and pedestrians. So, if we were going to lose 14 spaces at a location when you're already at over 85% of capacity for your parking spaces, that would lead you to think, well, maybe we should think about replacing these somewhere.
And I mean, the thought of Sunset Boulevard, and certainly, I've had a drink at the Plum Island Grill, just one, and I certainly loved the marsh, but it seemed to me, I have a truck, and to get it off the road enough, I was doing my dance and falling in the marsh. Doesn't seem to be a lot of room there, Martha.
Right, no, and I think that was one of the issues that was discussed, there's no shoulder there, and so the cars or trucks or whatever were infringing on the travel way, and the other issue is that it's right on the edge of the marsh, so it was also degrading the edge of the road, having the cars there.
All right, so that's kind of where I was driving at, and obviously Martha articulated it better as always, but is there any other thoughts quick from the board, then I'm going to open it up again to people in the audience?
Just, is this study final? This one is there, I mean, are there other locations that were considered? I don't know, like the, somebody mentioned the bridge, you know, can you make money at the two points on the bridge and clean those up? They exist now, they walk down there now, charge them for that. Could you hook up something with the airport and run a shuttle, a shuttle bus down and drop them off at those areas and have very little impact? I'm not sure who owns that property and how that would work, but the other point that was very well made was, if those things don't regulate as, as fast as Mr. Williamson does over here, no one's going to park in that place. If you try to grab the big dollar, no one will park there, and if you're going to bottom feed, you won't generate the revenues you thought you would generate. Just a couple of points, if that was the, if there are other, some other possibilities for parking that we could use, and maybe a little bit outside the box, with a shuttle bus for them?
Now, once again, everyone has been really civil tonight. You've had very good questions and answers, and it's all being stored or suspended, like I said, we're taking a lot of notes, and nothing's going to be voted on tonight. So, Steve, do you have something to say about the end of yours?
Trying to follow up, it's rules of the world. Yeah, Steve Manchin on 14th Street, a couple of things, if I can remember them, which being part of the challenge. Ellen Daly mentioned the idea of a business plan. I think that's a really interesting concept, because I don't think, parking is a hot-button issue on the island, we agree, but how much are you going to charge for this parking lot? A hot-button issue with the Plum Island Study Committee has been that residents of the town of Newbury should be allowed to come down and park in Newbury facilities at no cost. It should be people who do not live in the town that should have to pay maximum cost. So, there might be an implementation issue for the chief to be sorting out about, how does he know, you know, who's a resident, who isn't, who's paid, who hasn't?
If the resident sticker and it's on your, to fix where it's supposed to be, it's very easy for us to determine.
Right, well, on the rear windshield or something like that. But again, there may not be the revenue that you're talking about, because it may be residents that are parking there preferentially. Within the Plum Island Study Committee, at least one person thinks that at certain times in the year, people, non-residents should be allowed to park anywhere at no cost. That's been a hot-button issue with discussion. That would include places like Northern Boulevard, where you may or may not eventually choose to put a machine or something like that. But I don't think you're going to see the revenue that you're guessing, but again, that's where business plan comes in. And again, let's remember that in creating this parking lot, whether it be for residents and non-residents, whoever shakes it down, that means that some people aren't going to go to Mr. Williams' parking lot, for instance. And we already have a situation, I think I heard at one of the meetings, where people will drive around and around and around rather than pay a buck to get into the off-season rates that he may have. And I don't really like the concept of having people driving around and around and around, perhaps going down all the way, turning around, coming back down, and so on, as they keep on looking for a free place to park. And we're going to see that, and that has a lot to do with the quality of life on the island. But I think that whatever we come up with, there should be preferential treatment for the people that live in the town, pay the taxes, have property in the town, even if they're on the towners, and they should be allowed first come for serve, as they get to park at no cost. There goes your revenue, but again, it's the residents that really should be getting the benefits. Beach parking is always a premium at seaside communities, that's the reality. I think Sue Solz, or the town clerk, said something like, we're having 47 stickers sold last year for, to park on the streets or park down at the Parker River.
I did, too.
But, point is, there's a lot of demand, whether some people bought two, some people bought one, some non-residents that own property bought some, there's a lot of demand for parking. And if you create more parking at, say, Old Way, people are going to want to take those spots, too. It'll be for residents who will not have to pay, who should not have to pay. So, I think we really need to take a tough look at it and perhaps consider what we're going to do. And I don't see, if I lived in Old Way, I think I've been pretty unhappy with all the traffic, but I know what it gets, people start circling in, out, and I imagine, and I don't really know the parkery down there, it needs to be this map, but I can imagine people not only coming in, going all the way down here, oops, nothing there, now they got to affect a turn with cars on either side of them, trying to get in and out, and that'll be a real interest that we need to watch. So, I don't think it's as simple as we might like it to be, but also, I don't think it's going to be the revenue stream that we suppose it would be.
Thanks, Steve.
I'm Gary Shapiro, I own 18th and Street, and I'm here because I'm supporting all of my neighbors and all the homeowners in Old Way. And what I'm concerned about, in addition to everything I've heard tonight, is the diminishing home values that they would, would happen for their homes. Right now, their homes aren't worth as much because of the sewage plant right there, down there, so having a parking lot down there would further diminish the value of their homes, and that also would diminish the quality of life as well. So, I think that moving a problem from Sunset Drive and potentially around the Plum Island Grill, moving it over but not solving it is very much a disservice to those people, the direct others and the indirect others surrounding them, and that's all I want to say.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Dave Williamson, one Southern Boulevard. So, someone, I don't know if it was actually a question or not, but what, before there was any park, there was never parking on Sunset. Why was there a decision made to allow that parking? Do we know?
Are you looking at me?
Looking at anyone? Because here we're trying to solve a problem of parking that's on Sunset, but, you know, before, it was, there were problems because it was never allowed, so what, what happened to allow it?
You mean before the grill and people going to the beach, any?
There was never any parking allowed on Sunset. So, at some point, there was, had been a town decision to have public parking on Sunset, right? Or was it always public and was just never used, and all of a sudden used?
No, there was no parking signs there.
There were no parking, so, back to the question, what, when and why was it allowed?
Can I just add a point to what Dave said? Not only did these parking, no parking signs suddenly just disappear, and no more tickets were ever written, but we had a limit on how far they could park. And then, about two years ago, that limit got extended. Again, I never saw a public meeting, I never saw anything on it, and to say that there's parity between the use of the Plum Island Grill of those spaces and summer people is crazy. The summer people come up on the warm days and they use it, and they're still over. Plum Island Grill uses it every night they're open, and they fill it.
I can try and do some, Susan, I'll try and do some research on it internally and see what I can find, and then I'll share it with the board, so it'll be made public.
And I mean, I think, I could get myself in trouble. Probably, and Mike maybe can speak to it with his memory, because he's been here, and Ronnie's down back, he can remember and correct me, but I think what occurred, Kevin, probably when the grill opened, it got to be more of an issue, because people probably started to really just park there. And as a result, I mean, I think it was in my tenure, I'm trying to remember, they were parking so far down, it became a very dangerous issue, so we backed it up. And I don't think it was extended, I think we backed it up, and maybe we backed it up too far and we made it go this way again, I don't know, but I think it was the fact of trying to control the length of parking, and I think it was initiated, I'm just trying to go back on line, because of a complaint of a neighbor that came to our meetings.
Right.
So, that probably doesn't add a lot of clarity, but Susan said she'd take a look again and we'll take a peek.
It looks like it was, that was after it was made public.
What was after, yeah, responding to a problem.
So, do we, anyone remember when it was made, public parking, and there were public parking signs posted in?
They were actually, over the years, they had backup from the feds going down there.
Ronnie, come on up, so people can hear you. Introduce yourself.
Begin probably game first.
I think electricity, a killer.
Yeah, come here.
I just got the, just got the, what am I, in the corner?
Right there.
Wow. I gotta get my phone out.
Don't anyone dare.
The, there was parking on either side of Old Point Road and on Sunset, but it wasn't used much, because we didn't have a restaurant. When we put the
And when we put the restaurant in and it started backing up, the selectman, Dick Joy, you know, Ronnie, guys, put no parking signs all the way up Old Point Road at that time. Because people who had houses now couldn't park on Old Point Road when they had people. We always had a parking lot on Old Way, and, you know, a few people would use that.
You're allowed, Ron, you're allowed to say what you wanna say.
I mean, because when I took over as President at Pitter, we had a sign out there, it says, "Extra parking for Pitter." It's right on Elbers Fence it was, which we still have. And then when they put the water and sewer in, they took the plant, they put all the extra sand there, that, everything, and took that parking lot away. And then that went away. And then the parking got terrible down Sunset, because they always shut down the, uh, National Wildlife. And the people are coming from all over New England to drive down to the wildlife, and where do they go then? They can't go anyways, because wildlife's not open, parking, there's no parking on Plum Island.
And they really get stacked up.
And they get stacked up. And then we have the night parking with the restaurant, which only started when the restaurant started getting popping. Because there was a restaurant there before, the Four Seas, there was a ice cream stand there. And they all parked and left. Come in quick, get your sub, ice cream, go, you know? Now you have people staying for restaurants.
So then the parking, the beach, the daytime parking, the behavior has then extended now, as someone mentioned, down to, uh, the parking area by the river, by the bridge.
Which used to go to, that used to go to Old Way, now it goes down there.
Yeah, what happens is people say, well, I can park on Sunset and walk to the beach. Well, now I'll park, uh, in that parking lot.
And I think they, some of that parking down there contributed by people that strike a fish.
I, I, I watched, there's a lot of beach parking.
Yeah, there's a lot of, you can watch more come back there.
So can I ask you a question, Mr. Williamson? How, how full do your lots get during the summer?
Well, what's the day?
On a good, hot beach day?
Well, first of all, let me say, if the weatherman says it's a beach day, then it gets full. It could be a beautiful day, and they said it's not a beach day, it may not be full. That's one, one human behavior. But as I said, on those very hot, you know, humid days, the whole island is past capacity. Well, I, I have some questions about the equipment. They're solar powered, so do they need to face south, southwest?
Any ambient light will charge the battery, the battery's charging twenty-four seven.
All right. But on Plum Island, you would have to have, I assume, the back to the northeast?
It, it doesn't matter.
He's talking about sand.
I'm, no, I'm talking about our heavy weather on northeastern.
Yeah.
How waterproof is your display and all that?
Is that, it's waterproof, that's it.
A hundred percent. I'd love to see it.
Not a hundred percent, I mean, if you get a sideways rain, i- if you have a bill acceptor, you may get a little bit of water inside the console, but generally you don't, you don't see a lot of water going in through the water.
Well, I just say it could be packed with two inches of ice. So you're gonna wanna have the back to the northeast, northeast, and that facing the southwest. And if you put one along Sunset Boulevard, they would be standing in the march to use it. One thought. And then the thought is, if, if we use one of these, are we gonna have one at the center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. It's, uh, very low use for, for, for one of those machines, but why not? And then you'd have to have one at Sunset, correct?
Yeah.
And then the committee's talked about what to do on Northern. People don't walk too far to use them, like, do you, do you have an idea how often you need to have these? Where you won't have people walking? How far will people walk to use one?
We're staying focused right on the center right now. And then once we've moved the value, then the selectmen can figure out how it will be.
Yeah, all right.
Just stay in the center.
So how many days a year do you think it's that capacity now? Well, ten, twenty, four?
Nine to eleven.
Ten to thirteen.
Well, are you saying over capacity or at capacity? I, I don't know, fifteen?
Both, combined.
Fifteen, eighteen days? It, it's very hard to say. I, I would have to look at my records, but, you know, ten days a week, ten days a, a year, a season? It's a short season in its high test.
Yeah, I know.
Well, you know, we, at, at Pitter,
We get green hats too, so.
We, we rent, when we, we, uh, if you're renting the hall, I tell you, you can rent right next door at the package store, I'll go up and see Dave for extra space. You know, trying to not put cars on the road and stuff like that. But like, when we have our MRBA meetings and whatnot, and, you know, we got all the senators and state reps and everything, they, they park a lot of different places because they're pulling up and they think they can just park. Senator Tow was parked down by the, uh, the plant, and he got yelled at by a neighbor, saying he couldn't park there, and there was a police car down there. But, you know, we need those people to come, because otherwise we're gonna save our island. And that could happen anytime. Jeff, you, you come late and know there's no parking.
So you could have capacity on, on a winter day that's just fifty degrees and beautiful, and people are, you know, having fever, and they'll just come to the beach. Um, but someone made a comment about how, how hot, how often the price goes up. The price goes up and down on a, inside a given day.
Right.
It's just market demand. And, uh, you know, if you guys, you know, how do you price them? You know, obviously I have a, a concern about that. If you're pricing at the high rate, that's great, they'll come to me when I'm lower, I, you know, I, you know, but whatever. You know, you guys will do whatever makes sense for the town.
No, and I, I wouldn't take any pleasure by cutting anyone's throat that's also parking cars. It's important to find a
Balance.
Right.
Even to be, do it smartly, you need to be able to change the price.
Well, you can also do that, Dave.
Ask him.
And is that?
Yeah, we, we do offer a rate editor product, uh, product as part of the back office, where you can move the rates remotely, uh, from, from the back office system.
And the price is displayed on, the price is on the display?
Just match, uh, parking lot and new reported.
All right, are you done?
Yeah, thanks, guys. All right, whoso of the three hands would like to make a consolidated choice?
Um, Ellen Daly, Old Way, I just wanna make a couple of points of clarification. It's semantics, but I think it's really important. We did a lot of research to discover, there was parking, a parking lot on Old Way. And, and we have talked to people who were on the island forty, fifty years, and there was no parking lot on Old Way. There was parking allowed, kinda casually, down at the end of the street, towards the front where the station is now. And maybe there wasn't even a sign that said you could go there, but there was never a parking lot, nothing like that ever back there. There was a baseball field, there was a skating rink, and there was parking allowed.
And there was bad ones.
I think that's really important.
That's when we had lifeguards, that's where our lifeguards were parked, private vehicles when they showed up to work.
Which is about six or eight cars.
Yeah.
Could, could either of you gentlemen enlighten me? Is there something we could compare that to, like a parking capacity, like a McDonald's or, uh, another business, just to give people an idea of how many cars? Because I think to some people fifty cars doesn't sound like a lot, to some people fifty cars sounds like a staggering amount. Is there anything we can compare it to?
What's it, um, Mr. Williams' lot?
Sixty-seven, the way it is configured currently, sixty-seven cars.
We did a, a very comprehensive count of all the parking spaces on the island, too. That's, that's very accurate, so again, I would ask if that be for public record, if anyone wants it. The other thing I wanted to point out, Alicia, to you, is that, uh, Mr. Williams' lot probably fills up more than anybody else is on the island, because it's in the very best spot. One of the things that the parking study had indicated, along with saying this might be a solution, was that if we simply put signs up that showed people where the parking lots are, besides the one that's obvious when you come on the island, that we would probably be able to disseminate, like the one down near Blue and other things like that. So just some semantics, but I think they're important. Thank you.
I just really have some questions, mostly. Um, so I'm curious, uh, I just have some questions about the machines, because you said, I believe they cost, um, just under seven thousand?
Yes, correct.
And then what are the fees regarding, like you said, uh, just if someone is going to be changing the cost depending on the day or the time or the year or whatever? Like, who does that? Is that something you manage it, or the town pays a fee for that, or?
Right, so, so part of the package, it comes with a back office operating system. And that back office system encompasses all your seller year costs, because it communicates by, via 3G modem. Uh, it encompasses the credit card processing fees on our side. Um, obviously, your bank has their own set of charges, but we're not charging you, you know, based off of one transaction or ten thousand transactions, flat fee. It gives you the financial and maintenance reporting that we talked about earlier. It gives you access to the enforcement site and the pay-by-space environments, we're providing you with that. And the rate editor would be part of that package.
And what does that usually run?
Um, yeah, so that's, that's in the quotation that we provided, that's fifty-seven dollars per month.
Per unit?
Per meter, per meter.
Per unit, okay. So in a parking lot that is being suggested tonight, how many of these meters would be in that lot?
It really depends upon the entrances and egresses, uh, we've walked it out. I think we were talking, incorrect me if I'm wrong, was it not five meters for the spot?
Five meters for fifty cars?
No. Uh, 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 that may be wrong. Uh, but once again, it depends upon the entrances and egresses. You could do it with as few as two or three, but once again, in a beach environment where people are all arriving at the same time, you wanna provide convenience. So that's certainly a discussion to be had.
And can you help me understand, so if somebody pulls into the lot and they don't do anything, how is that, how is that determined? So they haven't paid anything, they haven't used this, and, but they're in the lot, like, how's?
Right, so the enforcement officers have access to, uh, our online web portal for enforcement. Um, the spaces are numbered according to your configuration, uh, where they're, they're color-coded, red, green, and yellow. So red obviously means not paid, you can click on any space and get the history of the payments on that space, tell when the person last paid, so you can kinda get an idea if there's a scuffle on there, if it was oversight. Uh, yellow would mean a space that recently expired, and the enforcement officer would have some discretion as to whether to pick it at the time or not, and the green shows they've paid.
And, I'm sorry, the estimated question for now, I'm really interested. So, um, you're saying two units, fourteen thousand dollars, a hundred dollars a month, in perpetuity to get the, I mean, I'm, does that rate go up over time, or is that adjusted annually, or is it an annual contract?
Our, our rate has stayed steady, um, over the past several years, so that has not moved.
So would the town have to call you and say, this is a bad beach day, lower the price? Or this is a great beach day, increase the price?
So there's a couple of different ways we can do that. Uh, we can provide you with the rate editor product. And once again, whoever has oversight over the lot would be able to move those rates accordingly from any handheld device with an internet connection. Um, we could, part of the enforcement site also shows you what the capacity of the lot is. Is, is the lot at eighty-five percent capacity? Is that at a hundred percent capacity? Is that fifty percent capacity? Uh, and you could have the system automatically move rates at that point based off of certain checkpoints. Um, it really comes down to, you know, what decisions are made internally.
And since it's a non-staffed parking lot, then would somebody, enforcement, I'm assuming, be responsible to come and post that the lot is full, that the lot isn't full, that the lot becomes, if it's full early in the day and later in the day it's empty? I mean, is that gonna be, that's gonna be a human that has to come and do some kind of enforcement on that?
Right, uh, yeah, there are devices out there that can do space counting and, and give you signs to that. That's not something I'm prepared to talk about. Uh, but obviously, the police department would have that information, it is part of our enforcement application, um, so they would know the capacity of any given lot.
Okay. I just, thank you for all that. Um, I do have one comment, which is, I started coming to these meetings back in 2013, and I remember very well that this study was actually, um, asked for when a group of residents from Sunset Boulevard and the townspeople that lived down that end were concerned about, uh, emergency vehicles not being able to get to their homes and things of that kind. I wish Danny were here tonight, he's not. But the one thing I just wanna add is that I know that he had made his parking lot available at a decreased price for Plum Island Grill, um, folks. And they wouldn't even rent his lot, which is right up the street from the restaurant. So I, I really do think location is an issue, and, uh, that's, I think.
Hi, it's Bill Margery Flanagan, eleven Plum Island Boulevard. I have, um, I have some commentary, I have some testimony, and I have a question. I have owned my property on, uh, which, my sideline is on Old Way for thirty-eight years. And there has never been a formal parking lot at the end of Old Way, as, has been said. Um, because the road goes around in a horseshoe and out, we were court. People used to go, maybe four cars, maybe six, I don't know, and park on the side of, of the road as they do on Sunset. It was informal, I don't believe it was sanctioned by the town, you folks would know that better than me. But there was never formally a, a parking lot established back there. My comment is that if we are, uh, looking at having cars stand in to wait to get into this parking lot here, they're gonna be backing up with their engines running, all the way down, all the way, all up by Darcy and, um, Colleen's house with the, uh, motors running and fumes coming into the air. So I think that's another environmental concern that should be considered. Um, suggestion, you speak to Dan Mahoney about the capacity of the parking lots, because in all due respect to Dave, he's right there at the beach. Uh, my property also happens to be right across from the package store, and I can tell you that, uh, the package store's not always full, just because his, his fills much more quickly. Uh, finally, my question is, um, uh, what is my question? Now I forgot my question. Oh, revenue. If in fact we do, this parking lot materializes and produces revenue, is it going to come back directly to Plum Island, or is it going into the Newbury Coasters in general? Do, do we know that now, or?
I'm shaking my head.
We're, we're one town, we don't segregate revenue based on what neighborhood it's coming from. We are one town.
That, well, that's why I'm asking, because folks are saying we can use that revenue then for trash or lifeguards or whatever, and...
It's our goal to generate more revenue positively, pay for these services that people want so badly.
But they would be distributed across the town, not exclusive to the island, correct?
That.
What, what, what would be distributed to the town?
The revenue from the parking lot would come back into the general fund of the town, wouldn't it, directly back to the island? Okay, then we can't assume then that that, that revenue is gonna come back to provide services for Plum Island.
You know, it, it's funny, I guess I'm stupid, because I always thought that if it was a revenue producer, that those types of checks and balances would be there to pull that for use for the services on Plum Island. But I guess what it's doing is it's balancing the fact that taxpayers' money could be paying for trash and, and quarter parties and everything else, so it's a balance, it's, just like Jay I said, it's a balance.
I don't look at it, I look at it like we're all one island, we're all, not one island, but we're all one town. And I pay my taxes in Byfield, the same way you guys pay taxes on Plum Island. I use the police department, I use the schools.
No, I'm just bringing it up, because folks have said this revenue's gonna come back to the island to pay for lifeguards, trash, and whatever, and it, it may or may not.
I would like to see those services come back to the island.
I also would, you know, it, I would like to see at least some of the services come back to the island, if not all of them. That's my motivation, and, you know, a lot of reasoning for this is that concerns I've heard, you know?
Plum Island is beautiful to us. I do not wanna see that island harmed at all. So please don't think that that's our
Oh, and I'm, I, I'm not being hostile there, I'm just asking a question, because folks have assumed that.
And I just, that's why I wanna be clear, is that I, we wanna make that, keep that island beautiful and just improve on it, and help, help it.
Many of it hopes that any profit would go to the entire town, just like any loss wouldn't have to be paid for by us.
Right.
Exactly.
And in the likelihood, until we hear a business plan, I haven't heard, you know, we don't, we, we can't fathom there'd be a profit, so hopefully, you know, they're, you know, they're not gonna come back and get it.
That's my other observation, having lived on the side of Old Way, had a house there for thirty-eight years, I cannot imagine you raise the revenue that you would need to justify the project on.
Thanks, Steve, do you wanna say something?
Well, no, I, I, I guess, just to clarify what you're asking, all money that's brought in is required by law to be deposited into the general fund. Based on the work of the Plum Island Study Committee, we are going to be addressing trash and, um, the waste stations in this fiscal year, 2017's operating budget. This isn't a reality.
This isn't a reality at any point in the near future, so, you know, we don't tie revenue brought in by a property on Plum Island has to be expended for a service on Plum Island. It just doesn't work that way. I think this got started, some of it, when we had many concerns brought before the board about services that, I don't know if they were cut at some point in time or they just never existed and there's obviously a need for them. So this was one alternative to consider an alter, to consider a revenue source that we may be able to provide some of those.
But in the town, does Plum Island generate most of the source of your taxes?
No.
It doesn't? No. That's a myth.
It's a big myth, too. It's often sproated.
That's okay. All right. Now, can I wrap this up?
I did want to address some of the revenue questions if I could. So revenue is an inexact science. You know, there are some questions that need to be answered in order to make some basic assumptions. But you're looking, you know, am I charging an hourly rate or a flat rate? What are the hours of enforcement? What hours will this lot be open? How long is somebody allowed to park for? What are your assumptions as far as occupancy is concerned? And from what I'm hearing tonight, certainly there are some questions, you know, about occupancy. And when you can start to answer some of those questions, then you can make some basic assumptions as to what revenue will be for Newbury. You know, with that being said, we have tremendous experience in short downs. I've never seen any parking operation, period, not make money. It's just, I don't think it's ever happened, to be perfectly honest. As to what level of money you can make, my company did run some preliminary numbers, this was prior to me jumping on this project, and we made some basic assumptions. Now admittedly, you know, looking at that, that may be a bit ambitious based off what I'm hearing tonight. But that being said, I do feel comfortable in saying this will be a revenue source for Newbury. To what extent, we won't know until we're able to answer some of those basic questions about enforcement, about how many hours you're allowed to park there, what the rates will be, and of course, occupancy. But once you're able to put those in place, will you be charging a dollar an hour, $2 an hour, you know, $5 a day to park in the lot? Will you be enforcing from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM or 9:00 to 5:00? You know, those are basic questions that you need to find the answers to. But overall, I've never seen a machine lose money, especially where 10, 15, 20 days a year, you're wired 100% capacity on the island. This will be a moneymaker, and, you know, I feel very confident in saying that to you.
What percentage comes from revenue and what comes from violation?
Once again, I don't have the answer.
Depends on how many people violate.
No, from what I know, when we spoke with Newbury Port, it was, they said that the majority of their funds comes from someone walking around and collecting and giving out tickets.
Enforced.
Yeah. So that there is a real human being that's there, that it's not an unmonitored site, and that the money they make is from having a person on site. So I'm wondering if you've got a breakdown on that.
Yeah, there's no exact science to it. You know, it comes down to how vigilant any given town or city is. You know, certainly for a lot of the cities and towns that are out there, like Newbury or I'm from the Philadelphia area, you know, Philadelphia generates the majority of the revenue from enforcement, from ticketing. You know, with that being said, I think of Rehoboth Beach, Delaware, we put 50 of these in a year ago, and they just went through the first season with it, and they had 50 machines and they generated about $1.5 million in revenue.
I don't think that's applicable in Newbury.
Was that an already established lot to then put in your equipment?
Yeah, they already had paid parking. Obviously, you're transitioning to a paid, the paid. There's certainly growing pains involved with that.
All right, before we start to break out with a lot of conversation back there, we can go back to a few things. And I would like to say to people there that are in the audience tonight, that, I mean, your selectmen, especially for this could be a town-based endeavor, are going to be critically careful. We will develop the business plan. I mean, myself as chair, I was on the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, and I think I got three terms. So we've dealt with things that can have impacts to neighbors. We've dealt with things that have to weigh the value as opposed to, like Colleen said, the common good. And Doug deals with this an awful lot, and he's part of the component. And Chuck, you've been around forever on these issues. So we're trying to, like Tracy articulated, I guess the word would be balance, some of the revenue, make things more revenue neutral, and part of the way would be some of the things on Plum Island, being able to make those more neutral as we go forward and are providing these things. We will not take lightly any of the things tonight that have been said as we go forward in assessment of, you know, maybe a parking lot at Olga Way. I think Tracy said it, really, we've been looking at this thing for how many years now, Doug, or Tracy?
Before I got here.
So I mean, we're not rushing to judgment. So I think you got to really remember that. And everything we do, and I can tell Alicia wants to say something, will be, as the word seems to be in our town, transparent, it'll be in the open, and we will fully expect access from the community on these issues. Alicia wanted to say something.
I just have a question about the parking, about how, if it's a gravel lot, how do you know where to park?
So one of the reasons that you have the perimeter guardrails, you can number the spaces and show the markers because you're obviously painting wire off or something like that.
So everybody would just park there?
Yeah, it would be delineated on the guardrail that's offset, of course, so off the edge of the lot, you know, space one, two, three, four, five, and you could have little reflective markers.
So there's barely only, there's no like, there's only head-on parking in that whole thing?
Say again?
There's only head-on parking in there, correct?
Yeah, we didn't angle it or anything like that, that's all. I agree.
Ronnie, talk about, because you're a long ways away. Okay.
No problem.
You ready? Go ahead, Ronnie. Where are we going to put sand when we store sand? Do we, did we re-space that?
Off the end of it, Ronnie.
So we have a space for that? Because that's probably the most important thing for that area.
That's what it's permitted for right now.
Right. We don't want to lose that. So when we need it, we can...
And in a pinch, we'll use the lot.
Off the end, yeah, out there?
Yes.
And gravel lots, I put...
Excuse me?
Are you going to do what you do?
You'll go across the parking lot to get it.
Let Ronnie finish parking that.
You'll drive on the gravel.
All right, guys. I do gravel parking lots with some of the places I'm on the boards of, and I use string. I nail a string down with a big nail and tie it to the other side as my markers for lanes for parking cars because they don't go away and you can drive over them versus trying to put lines down with a paint or doing any other thing. They stay, other than, you know, plowing will wreck them, but I don't think we're going to be a plowless place in the winter, right?
No.
You know, you know what I mean? All right, thanks, Ronnie, Mike.
Okay, so we're talking about this part. I guess I have a question for Art. So if you're parked here, how far is it from the beach to go down here and then out to the beach versus parking on Sunset or parking at the bridge? Is it much further? Is it much shorter? You know?
I haven't measured. That would be short, yeah.
Not a lot. Now, the other suggestion I have is, you're talking about 56 parking spaces here, you've got 25 at, on Sunset, or we approximate 25. So that takes care of half this parking lot. And then you've got what's going on at the bridge, and then what's going on at the center. Now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of resident parking on the island, we're giving up, we think we're getting revenue for that, but these guys are saying that once, that a few of these things are going to make tens of thousands of dollars a year, we'll probably exceed what we could with permits, and maybe there shouldn't be so much free parking for residents. We do have the lowest tax base in Essex County. So that's a thought. And I guess, I guess last, so if you metered those spots as opposed to the capital cost to put this in, the maintenance, the parking enforcement, you're going to have to have parking enforcement anyway, but you're, so you're going to have to get a parking enforcement officer wherever you put these things. You're going to have trash removal. There should be plenty of trash back here. And you're going to have, you're going to have, you know, you're going to have people who want to use a quarter lot, and you're going to have to provide that. So all that being said, maybe, maybe we already have this capacity in existing places, and those meters will take care of the infant issue.
We have a problem on Sunset that many people in this room have commented on, in asking people to walk from the bridge, that's quite a longer ways than that.
They do not.
I know they do now, but there's a lot of people, and there's a lot of people in this room, that's a, that's quite a walk to schlep all your stuff off to the beach.
Yeah, we do.
I know some people do out of desperation because there's no way to pass.
So, I know you said there's concern on Sunset. It's a group of residents on Sunset that have a concern, and now there's a group of people on Olga, and all the abutters are on this property.
It's not a...
Why not offer the property for sale to the abutters and you have perpetual property taxes?
Excellent.
Good idea.
Why not do that? Rather than build all this, take those, take a lot of the land, offer it to the abutters, and then they're going to pay you property taxes every year.
I mean, but then it's, it's kind of like, I don't know, it's...
Let's, yeah, let's, we're still, we're still, we're still filtering so much information. And I'd like to, I was pushing for nine o'clock. Darcy, would you like to get up and speak?
Oh, I just wanted to say, and thanks, Mark, for raising that. One of the things when the abutters met and we've been in conversation, we asked, were there abutters, and I mentioned this to Tracy at a meeting, were there abutters that would consider buying parcels, abutting their property if that were an option, or acquiring those parcels? And I had six people respond immediately saying yes, that they would be interested. Obviously, more conversation, but that would be an ongoing generating revenue because of the tax base. So I do, I would offer that as a consideration for revenue.
All right, one more, and then I'm going to ask the board if they have any commentary, and I would like to wrap this up. Is there any questions from, yeah, from anyone else in the audience? Steve?
Well, no one else is going to say this, I'll just reiterate, that I think it's really short-sighted, I think we're going to be charging revenue for residents of the town in Newbury to come down and park on Plum Island. I think that the present system that's in effect right now, where you can get a sticker, Parkland Road and Boulevard...
We do charge them for those, those things, so...
Right, it's a minimal charge of $20, but you're right. But you also can use it for the bridge down at the Parker River. But I think trying to have these meters recharging residents is not the way to go. I'm not sure we'd pass a town meeting. And again, in terms of cost, we start talking about trash and that sort of thing. Again, I think the selectmen need to take about the town as a whole. If you start trying to do something at Plum Island Center only, I think it's going to be a tough sell to the town to say, we're only going to do it here. Because what about in Byfield? What about in Clean Fields? What about in other parts of the island? Trash accumulates there, that's going to be another big time cost. So I think we need to be careful about how much we're inviting people to come down and pay, because I don't think they're going to pay, and I think you're going to have trash issues to deal with. Some of the stuff that's being talked about are the trash and the parts and bylaw changes. Because right now, we have a carry-in, carry-out bylaw with Plum Island, and you'd have to change that. That means the town's going to adopt it. And they may know when they realize that they're really doing something just for Plum Island as opposed to the town as a whole. So I wouldn't count on getting much revenue out of this plan. Could be wrong, but that's where a real business plan might address that.
Thanks, Steve. One thing tonight, as we kind of asked my board to have any summaries they might like to have, Tracy, Martha, and I and John Lucy have attended the Plum Island community meetings. The good thing for my board tonight is to understand by them being here, and it's just on one issue, it's not trash, lighting, and life, that and other, the intricacies that show themselves on Plum Island, and I think part of it, you guys can correct me one more time, you know, the houses are close, there's certainly a high influx of people in the summer, and you do have some businesses there, and it's considered the beach. So it's a complicated area, and I'm glad that my board could hear tonight some of the dichotomies, you know, some of the, you know, give and take, yin and yang, and all those things. So Chuck, do you have anything to add?
Not so much to add, but to comment, thanks for everyone coming out. I have learned a lot tonight. Many of the parking issues I was aware of, but not what they were. So thank you all for straightening me out on that. Thanks.
Alicia?
Thank you. I'm very glad, very glad to hear what you had to say. Thank you very, very much.
Jay?
Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. I just want to speak to openness and clarity. I've received one letter about this, and it was abutters' concerns. It was neither signed by the author nor any of the abutters. I encourage anybody to email me, I'll talk to anybody personally that wants to talk about this. If you send me an email, please sign it, so I know what I'm dealing with. Right, right. It's, when we speak of openness and clarity, I get one anonymous letter. It's, you know, it's tough.
I'd actually like to speak to that because I am the author of that.
Nice to meet you.
It was not actually written for this committee. It was written because originally, this was under the auspices of the Plum Island Study Committee, and then it moved out from under the auspices.
That's fine, but I still had no idea who wrote the letter and who the abutters are. I'm sorry.
Peter knew, and the abutters were part of that committee meeting.
Unfortunately, Steve is not here tonight.
I'm happy to share names. That was not an intentional slight to you, and I hope that you would not receive it in such a way.
I didn't, but it would be nice to know who it is.
It's me.
A couple more things going forward I just like everyone to remember. This is just a concept, it's an idea, it's throwing it against the wall. Revenue that doesn't come out of our pockets and tax money, I look at as a positive, whether it's $8,000 or $800,000. It's in a commercial area, it's near an auto repair garage, it's near liquor stores, it's near my house. Right, it is, but it's probably the most commercial area of Plum Island. And these are just things to keep in mind. The site, it's regularly disturbed by heavy equipment, bringing materials in and out. As far as the wildlife goes, if you're concerned about siltation and things like that, those are types of activities to avoid. So it's a concept, I'm looking for feedback, I encourage anyone that wants to talk to me about it, whether you love it, you hate it. Like, there's a couple people out here, I know you hate it, you know, talk to me, I'll make time for you. Just, I don't want anonymous letters and no, no, no ideas, like even parking at the bridge, I don't think it's a hot idea, but it's an idea. You know what I mean?
There is heavy equipment that goes down.
I'm fully aware of it.
And that's why I commented earlier about the condition of Olga Way.
Right.
It's dying. Okay, but the big sand, the big sand pile that Doug was talking about is right about here.
Right.
It's not way back here. This is primitive dune back here. This is where all the wildlife is. So, so, yeah, I understand, and there's always going to be traffic there. This is the snow farm last year, and this area here, and we, on Olga, this is my property here, this is Darcy and Colleen here, we live with that, that's fine. But going back here and disrupting this pristine primitive dune is something that we take issue with.
I have one comment to that, is that this site, the reason that that is just about that size is that if you look at this picture that was given to us, and they talked about disturbing the trees, if you orient this just about like this, just about like this with that picture, you can see how you could come in and then dogleg, and that's just what...
And you're at the base of the dune.
And that's, and that's just what that does right there. No, it's a good deal, a good distance away, when you get out of the field, it's...
I live over there, but it's not right.
Okay, I didn't want to turn into an argument, I just wanted to say that it's sited there for a reason. And as far as bringing the material in here and it being a pristine dune, the reason that's flat all the way back here is when the water and sewer project was performed down at Plum Island, the stockpile went back that far.
Stockpile that went behind Tennessee.
There was, yeah, there was thousands of cubic yards there. We ended up screening it all before we put it on the beach. So we're well aware of how much material was there. And you can see this plateau there today. If you walk out right now, you'll see that that little, that area right there will fit on this plateau. All right.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good day.